This August 16th Board Meeting to order. George, could you take a roll?
Sure. Colonel Evans?
Yeah.
Mr. Grozan? President? Mrs. Ludwig?
Here.
Mr. Miko?
Here.
Mr. Nasa?
Here. Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
District Goals. This is part of the meeting where we just restate our district goals and talk a little bit about them. We have three district goals. The first one is student achievement. That's what we focus, that's our main focus and all other goals support that. We have financial prudence, which means we try to get every, the maximum value out of every taxpayer's dollar. And then we have community engagement. That's where we use our community and we solicit their help and they offer their help and we work with them and they work with us and they make us a better district. And from there, we'll move on to recognition, I don't believe.
No recognitions tonight.
No recognition tonight. Superintendent's report to the community?
Thank you, Mr. Nasa. I did, there's a slide up on the screen just to give a few updates. First of all, as we're preparing, all of our staff, we had some of our staff back today. All of our staff will be back tomorrow, so we're excited to kick off the 18-19 school year with our convocation tomorrow morning. But just a reminder to our board and families, our first day of school for first through ninth grade students and kindergarten orientation is on Monday. Kindergarten parents should have received a letter letting them know what time the orientation is at their specific school. Tuesday, we welcome back our kindergarten students and 10th through 12th grade students and then our preschoolers will be back on the 22nd, ready to have everybody back for the school year. On the right side of the screen, one of the things that Dan Fosser, Communications Coordinator, has been working on new this year, we're very excited about, is we've, through his work with a local vendor, has developed a calendar for the district. So, it will actually go from September to August and that will be distributed probably the last week of August to our students, so they'll bring them home to their parents. And they'll also be throughout the city, as it says here, at the library, the rec center for any community member that would like those. But not only does it give some information and highlights of what we do and what we provide as a district, but has various district events posted on the calendar throughout the date. So, obviously, sometimes schedules change, so we always encourage parents and families to visit the website, but we think this will be a great addition and resource for our parents throughout the school year. The last thing that I wanted to update is summer construction projects. Mr. Brechner, I think last meeting, shared some updates. We've had a tremendous amount of work. Chapman is wrapping up. There's still some loose ends that are being finished, but Chapman's new HVAC system is in and they're doing a few last minute touches to get things ready for the first day of school, but that project's in great shape and I'd like to thank our teachers and staff at Chapman for being flexible as they got back into the building and got into their rooms. All of the elementary parking lots have been redone. Those are all done, striped, ready to go for the beginning of the school year. We've had some sidewalk done around the district as well. The one thing that I did want to update the community and the board on, we talked about our secure vestibule project. And we did go out to bid with that. We went out to bid in plenty of time. Because of the competitive market out there, we did not have the trades bid on all aspects of our project to complete it. So, we still have a plan to do that fall and in the fall and up to winter break. So, that will still be done, but as families come back, they may not see changes to the main entryway, but please understand, part of our goal is to be financially prudent. Folks that bid on the projects extremely overpriced themselves on the bid, as well as electric and plumbing, I did not bid at all. So, unfortunately, we weren't able to get that done for the first day of school, but that will be done. Our schools are ready to have the work done as the school year goes on and I know Mr. Brechner's going to stay on top of that and get that completed here in the coming months. So, that's the report to the community that I'd like to share, unless there's any questions, that would conclude it.
Thank you, Cameron. I'll add to that in that in my day job, we work with development in Cleveland. There's a lot of big projects going on downtown and a lot of redevelopment going on and a lot of those jobs that normally would have 120, 150 tradesmen on site each day are down to about 50 or 60 because there's just so many projects going on right now and many of them are falling way behind. And so, we'll see how that plays itself out, but that will drive up the price, which is the opposite of when we built the middle school and the high school. We were in a position when it was lower and there was lower activity, we got exceptional bids, so we just want to keep an eye on that and I'm sure Mr. Brechner's all over that.
Reflects the improved economy.
Yes, excellent.
Mr. Nasa?
Yes.
If I can just add, piggyback onto it, the construction project at Polaris, we're experiencing that exact same environment. It is a all-hands-on-deck environment and again, Carl mentioned it, when we built the middle school and renovated the high school, we were in the catbird seat. And today's market, today's environment, it's much more of a negotiation, it's much more of working with your contractor, but bodies are scarce. And the one thing that I will, I will comment on is a lot of the different tradesmen will work on jobs where they know they're going to get paid and they know they're going to get paid quickly. And fortunately, the Polaris project, the treasurer is on that and that's never been an issue, but it does make a difference just in getting tradespeople. They're, they're in a market where they get to pick and choose right now, so tables have turned quite a bit.
Alright. With that public comment, we don't have any public comment tonight. Approval of minutes. We have four different meetings to approve. We have the April 30th, May 17th, June 7th, and June 18th minutes. Can I have a motion?
Sound moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Duke. Thank you, Jane. Appreciate that. Any comments on any of them? We've already had them.
Good job, Don.
Good job, Don. A lot of work. George, can we take a roll?
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Nasa?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Excellent. That brings us to the treasurer's report.
Thank you, Mr. Nasa. As you'll see in the first few items of my agenda, items A, B, and C are the financial report for the month ending May 31st, June 30th, and July 31st. With June 30th in there, I wanted to provide a brief update on how we finished the fiscal year 2018 compared to the May 5 year forecast. I do have the slides in front of you also on the screen, so just to give a brief overview on revenues. The forecast, we forecasted in May 74,358,000 in revenues for the general fund for fiscal year 2018. As of June 30th, at the end of the fiscal year, we received 74,649,953, which is 290,000 above the forecast or point, point 39 percent. If you look at the bottom line, the biggest change there is in all operating revenues and that was primarily due to catastrophic aid being 273,836 dollars, which was 124,000 over the forecast of about 150,000. So, I just wanted to recognize the special department, Andrew Kuzminskis in Carroll Lake for doing a great job of seeing an increased amount in catastrophic aid. And last year, we received 157,000, so it was well above what we received last year as well. In addition, we received BWC refund, Bureau of Work's comp of 50,000 and then interest was 44,000 above the forecast, which totaled for the year about $420,000 in general fund interest.
Wow, nice.
Which is an increase from the previous year as well.
It's a big number, yeah.
Excellent.
Yeah, nice accuracy.
For expenditures, we forecasted 69,754 in expenditures within the general fund. As of June 30th, we expended 67,586. We're 2,168,000 under the forecast or 3 percent below the forecast prior to other financing sources. Other financing sources account for general funds, transfers of general funds to other funds to cover operating deficits. These are, these were budgeted, they still need to take place. They weren't, they didn't take place prior to the year-end close due to my absence, so we'll make these next month during fiscal year 19 for fiscal year 18. So, these transfers still need to happen. Overall, we're about 3 percent from the May, under 3 percent from the May 5 year forecast. One, one portion of it, as you'll see on the bottom line, is we've forecasted outstanding encumbrances of 1.1 million. We saw an increase of 1.8. What that was, was budget being encumbered at the end of the year for purchases and those were paid in July and August of this month, so it just kind of carried over as a timing. And the biggest chunk was the Chromebooks that were ordered, which we were still negotiating prices and those were received, paid, distributed this week by Mrs. Turner's team and they were paid this week, so it was, it was just a carry forward. So, overall, so within our benchmark of the 3 to 5 percent. Salaries and benefits, which is the biggest chunk of the budget, sorry, let me change the page. Salaries and benefits, which is the biggest chunk of the budget, was, I felt was pretty, forecasted pretty well for that time period and we'll continue to look at purchase services, material supplies, and other objects where we can improve on the forecasting there.
So, of the, on this page, when you look at the 3.3 million 247, that 1 million is timing above it, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and then there's a portion of the 2 million above that that's timing as well, right? That is spent in the first couple of months?
Right.
Okay, alright.
It was, it's the fact that we're on a cash basis accounting?
Yeah.
Which it's, we account for when the expenditures and revenues hit versus when the, when the accrual method when the timing of the purchase.
You need to be cool and accrual.
What's that?
Nothing.
Is that accounting?
Didn't work, I tried, I tried.
Be cruel to the ones you love.
If there's no, if there's no questions on the, on the update, moving on to item D, it's Ohio Schools Council, the annual programs that will belong to, continuing them for another fiscal year. E, district-wide inventory of assets. This week, we started our physical inventory with Asset, Asset Works. They started the middle school Monday and Tuesday, the high school yesterday, and then moving on to the elementary buildings today and, or the rest of this week and starting next week with the bus garage and this building as well. So, excited to get that going. This is another component of it. This is buying the software that they have where we can do a better job maintaining the inventory on more up-to-date software than what we've been using. It also comes with a barcode scanner and scanner and a mobile component where we could do our own physical inventory as well, which will streamline that process. Item F, Exhibit E, which is a handout that, say your desk is the amended temporary appropriations. I needed to make some adjustments from the appropriation, temporary appropriations in July, which were adjusted for fiscal year 2018 balances carried forward in 18 and other funds didn't impact the general fund. It was mainly other funds such as permanent improvement building fund, some of the grants and food service. So, we'll have annual bud, by law, required to pass an annual budget by September 30th, so I'll have that at our next, our next regular board meeting. And then, item G, which is off the consent calendar, which requires a separate vote, it's our OSBA Capital Conference Delegate nomination. So, I'll turn that back over to you, Mr. Nasa.
Could I have a motion?
Sound moved.
A second?
Second.
Thank you, Jane. I think Richard will be the delegate, I'll be the alternate, is that how we're, am I being the delegate and you're being the alternate?
Are you fighting me for it?
No, no, we're not fighting for it, I know it's...
I don't know if it matters, we're both going, so.
Yes.
That's fine, I can be the delegate and you can be the alternate.
Alright. George, can you take a roll then?
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Nasa?
Yes.
Motion passes. Richard's our delegate and Carl's the, Mr. Nasa's the alternate. And if there's no further questions, that concludes my report.
Alright. This is back to the superintendent's report. Timely information?
Under timely information, as we've shared at the last meeting, we had our retreat, we looked at our Strong Schools 2020 Plan, we've developed the action steps for this school year, so this is an annual approval by the board of our mission core beliefs and our goals for the year, and it does require a vote, Mr. Nasa.
Can I have a motion?
Sound moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Jane. Any discussion or, I know we had a really good, in our, in our retreat, we had a lot of in-depth discussion on these topics and I think we're, I think we're in a great place. I don't have any, does anybody have any comments or adjustments or recommendations? George, could you take a roll?
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Can I vote for George?
What's that?
Can I vote for George?
No.
No.
I do have two additional items that aren't on the agenda under timely information. Just wanted to share, I have a slide up for everyone. As we talked about, school starts next week and that also means it's open house time around the district. So, we have done, preschool will be on August 20th at 6:00 and 7:00 PM. On the past few years, we've done open house for our elementary parents the day before school started. So, we've, we've talked with our principals and they wanted to try something a little different a little bit later, so it will be the following Monday, the 27th, as you can see the various times, are 5:00 to 7:00 for most of the buildings, 5:30 to 7:30 for Whitney. And then the middle school has the August 28th and 29th, simply, I believe it's, I don't have it in front of me, but it's broken down by grade because of the number of parking spots and parents there. And then the high school will be on the 30th. So, we hope that our parents will get out to our open houses, meet the teachers that your children will be working with throughout the school year and take that first step to be a great partner with the district in the education of their children. It is time to get sports season underway. I think we've had our first official competition with soccer tomorrow, correct?
Yes, boys and girls soccer. Girls, I believe it's 6 o'clock at the high school, Paquette Stadium, and boys 8 o'clock.
Yeah. And if you haven't seen the Twitter feed, a lot of our soccer games have been moved to the stadium for the next week or so as the, the fields that they typically play on the Folds Fields are being rehabbed a little bit from play over the summertime, so they'll be at the, at the stadium. But we always kick off the football season. We've got an early home opener, August 24th, 5:00 PM. We'll have Team Strongsville's Community Tailgate, so it's always a great time. We ask, you know, invite everybody to come out and enjoy the festivities before the game. At 7:00 PM, we'll have our first home football game and as we started last year, we will feature an elementary school and have an elementary school at each home football game, so Sarare is going to kick it off, so that's Sarare Elementary School night at the football game. And for those that, we encourage everybody to get out and see our fall sports, whether it's at the middle school or at the high school and you can figure, you could search StrongsvilleAthletics.org and you can get the full schedule up to date as to where all of our sports and athletes will be playing throughout the fall season.
Excellent.
The last thing I did want to bring up is, if you recall, a few meetings ago, we had the CEO of Swensons come and share a proposal to have a ground lease on one of our properties on Pearl Road. The board requested that Swensons send a letter of intent. They've sent that letter of intent. We've shared that with the board and based upon the review, my recommendation to the board is it's not the time to move forward with the Swensons project, but I did want to bring it up for discussion to see your thoughts on it and to see if you would like to do anything different. But again, my recommendation, it was a great conversation with Swensons, it was a great offer that they shared, but with the space that we have, the property that we have, the needs that we may have in the future, going into a possible 40-year ground lease, I think is not in the best interest of the district at this time. So, I'll turn it over to any board members that may have a comment.
I mean, from my point of view, I agree with your recommendation not to move forward. The return on the investment that we'd have to make into the property and the commitment of the time wasn't, I'm not even, I'm not even 100% certain it would have been a positive return on investment, so it didn't, it just wasn't, wasn't the right place, the right time, the right offer, so.
I agree. I agree with the recommendation, not to mention that, you know, land is precious and once you give it away, you can't get it back, even though it would have been a lease. And aesthetically, I always think of Mr. Carbone's standardized approach to everything in Strongsville looking the same and what they presented would not have looked the same as what we'd like to have along that corridor. So, I think you're right and I think, at least Sheldon.
Richard, Jane?
No, I agree. I think that's the right decision at this time.
I'm fine with it. I think we need to digest canes before we, before we add Swensons. I think, I think people are enjoying Pearl Road traffic enough.
Well, thank you for the, the feedback. I will reach out to our contact with Swensons and let them know the decision of the board, but I appreciate your consideration and listening and I'll share the decision back with the representatives. So, that concludes my timely information. At this time, I'm going to ask Mr. Brechner, our operations manager, to share his business services report for the month. Steve?
Good evening, everyone. I have a couple of items on the agenda for tonight. The first one is the security contract addendum. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education approves the security service contract addendum for services at the high school with U.S. Security Associates. You have the straight time rate there of 1538 and then the overtime holiday rate of The rate structure will be effective beginning August 21st. All services will be paid out of the parking lot revenues and the high school O-18 fund. And that's in Exhibit F.
Thank you.
Sound moved.
Thank you. Motion? Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jane. Thank you, Duke. Any discussion? It's, it's only a slight increase over the previous...
30-some cents.
Correct, 38 cents.
38 cents, okay.
Mr. Nasa, just for clarity, this, this is parking lot attendance at the high school, so as it's, you know, security contracted is, if you're ever at the high school and you see the morning parking lot attendance, that's what this is for.
Okay.
So, they're only there during school days and not special events?
Well, I believe, Steve, have we, I know we talked about possibly having them, so if you want to...
We talked about, so Mark Smithberger and I have been talking about that side lot during events, when it's not monitored, how crowded it gets and the safety concerns of a, ambulance need to get in there, get out. So, what we've decided to do and we proposed is to hire a second security attendant during those nights for those events to help control and make sure that that's a safe and organized place to park. That would be included at this rate.
So, say for the Spring Musical, if you anticipated a large crowd, you might utilize the security officer at that point?
Correct.
Okay.
We went through the school year, sporting events and any kind of arts and music programs and anticipated a generous estimate of how long that would be, or how much that would be, and looked at the account and we feel like that could be covered from that O-18 account from the revenues generated.
Okay, great.
Excellent.
So, something you'll have to think about is in the future, you know, the first year is the, collect the data, but if we start doing that, right now, the parking is based on students purchasing parking tags and the parking lot attendant is during the times when the students are there. But if, if this grows, we're going to have to look at how we, how we justify the expense and how we're collecting the fees, because otherwise, we're expecting the students to subsidize parking for events that they very well aren't going to. So, something to be aware of.
Correct, thank you.
Do we charge the juniors for the new lot we put in on the other side of the stadium?
Yes, we do.
Good. And I don't have a problem at all with students subsidizing the events because a lot of them do participate, it's just the cost of doing business. So, I disagree with you, Richard. I don't think that's a concern.
Well, we just got to make sure we don't go negative, right? So, we don't start burning money, that's, that's important to make sure that whatever we do. But at the same time, we have to be safe as well and we can't have lanes blocked so you can't get an ambulance in or something, you know, so let's keep an eye on it, as you always do.
Okay, thank you.
With your heavy thumb.
The second item on the agenda are the gifts that have been donated to the district.
Oh, we need a vote.
I'm sorry.
Can we have a vote? Sorry.
Sorry.
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Nasa?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Excellent.
So, the second item on the agenda are the gifts that have been donated to the district. Fabrizi Trucking donated $1,750 to be used towards the purchase of a school-themed t-shirt, t-shirts for district staff. Serpentine Chevrolet donated $1,000 to be used towards the purchase of school-themed t-shirts for district staff. Next Day Signs donated $125 to be used towards the purchase of school-themed t-shirts for district staff. CQ Printing donated $250 to be used towards the purchase of school-themed t-shirts for district staff. The Vi family donated $1,001 to the Strongsville High School Piano Fund and the Treppke family donated $500 to the Strongsville High School Piano Fund. And that concludes this portion of the report.
Thank you. Do we have an update on the piano fund? I mean, how are we doing?
I think we're, George, do you know offhand, I think we're like maybe two-thirds of the way there? Getting close?
So, when are we getting a piano?
I'll, I'll circle back.
Okay, so we'll come, we'll come back to that. No, I know, I know they've had, had a great, as you've seen in recent agendas, some very significant donations. Mr. Hire has started to wean down the piano that he feels would meet the needs of the district moving forward. And once again, the purchase of the piano is going to come through donated funds, so I, you know, I think it's commendable for the work that they're doing to get those funds and we'll come back to George maybe after Aaron's report to see where we're at. So, again, welcome Erin Green, our Director of Curriculum, for her report for this month. Erin?
Thank you. Tonight, we have six items under the Curriculum Department report. First item is for Strongsville High School to enter into contract, a three-year contract with Naviance, as shown in Exhibit G. Item two is for Strongsville Middle School to enter into a three-year contract with Naviance, as shown in Exhibit H. And this is a college and career readiness program that our students use in order to ensure that we are preparing them and their post-secondary goals align with their interests. Number three is an MOU or an update for our Ohio Learning Program. This is the program we utilize to keep our students who are non-traditional students in school, mostly for K-8 students, and that MOU is shown in Exhibit I. Item four, we have an agreement, affiliation agreement with Baldwin Wallace University, specifically their Communication Sciences and Disorders Department. That's shown in Exhibit J, which leads to a speech-language pathology student-teacher placement, item five. We have a recommendation from the superintendent that we place student-teacher to Sarare Elementary School from September through November of this year and a student at Baldwin Wallace. And the last item, number six, we have a correction, a change of destination for an out-of-state trip. There's been a change of plans, correction to the agenda from April 19th of 2018. The out-of-state trip for the Strongsville High School Girl Soccer Team, the destination has been changed from Seattle, Washington to Knoxville, Tennessee due to a significant increase in airfare. They will now take chartered motor coaches to Knoxville, Tennessee. That concludes my report.
Thank you.
I just had a question. The Naviance program at the middle school, how many years have they been doing that? Or is this the first time that that's going to be offered to them? Jane?
They used a portion of it last year as a start in the middle school because they have it at the high school.
Right.
And so, it makes, this will be the, the year now that they connect, connect the data that they have from the students in eighth grade and it will go up to the high school.
Okay.
So, what they've done is a lot of the heavy lifting, getting them in it, having them understand it a little bit better, starting that career process, and so now that information can be transferred to the high school.
And this is all handled through the guidance counselors or, okay?
Correct. Correct, and then they put, they can push things out to students and, you know, as far as colleges go, to parents. So we'll work this year on getting that information, as we noted in the 2020 plan, getting that information out to parents and making sure that they recognize it as a resource that they can use.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Erin. Next, we have Director of Student Services, Andy Trujillo, for his items this month, Andy?
Good evening, members of the Board. This evening I have three items for your consideration, the first one being the tuition-free admission of a foreign exchange student from Japan for the 2018-19 school year. Second is a contract with Applewood Centers, in particular Gerson School for the 18-19 school year at a cost of $38,500 per student out of the general fund. And lastly, Monarch School of Belfair Jewish Children's Bureau, that is for $79,500 per student during the 18-19 school year. Any questions?
Nope.
Thank you, Andy.
Thank you, Andy.
And finally, we have our Assistant Superintendent Jenny Pelco with the Human Resource Report for the month, Jenny?
The following items under Human Resources for your consideration. Under E1, non-certificated resignations. Under E2, the appointment of a certificated staff, and appointments of non-certificated staff. Under E3, appointments for certificated substitutes. And appointments for non-certificated substitutes. An appointment for non-certificated supplemental contracts, prorated. An appointment for a certificated supplemental contract paid upon completion. Appointments for non-certificated supplemental contracts paid upon completion. Continuing, under E3, changes in hours for non-certificated staff. Under E4, changes in status for non-certificated staff. Under E5, changes in salary for certificated staff. Under E6, we have one unpaid certificated leave and an unpaid non-certificated leave. Under E7, medical leaves for certificated staff and medical leaves for non-certificated staff. Under E8, volunteer chaperones. Under E9, stipend for leadership. And then if you can look in the addendum, I just want to highlight, under E2, there was an appointment for a certificated staff member that we just hired. And that concludes my report, unless you have questions for me.
And there are no items for technology this month, although Vicki's been working extremely hard with LMS trainings, Maker Space Camps, rolling out Chromebooks for the one-to-one program. So no Board approval items, but she has been implementing what you've approved in the past throughout the summer, getting ready for the new school year. So with that, that ends the superintendent's report.
Mr. Wright, I do have an update on the piano. So we've collected about $6,715 in cash. We also have a commitment from the Strongsville Rotary of $15,000. So those two combined, we're about $21,715 out of the $40,000 needed.
And they're estimating around $35,000 for the type of piano, so we're closing in?
Closing in. Alright, that brings us to our Polaris report.
Thank you, Mr. Nasa. I want to announce that on August 21st, at, from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM, there's going to be a job and career training open house, which will give you information on the adult education programs. Some of the programs that they will be highlighting are automotive service technician, cardiographic technician, dental assisting, cosmetology, early childcare, HVAC, heating ventilating, air conditioning and refrigeration, medical assisting along with medical billing. There's the Police Academy, the phlebotomy certification, the Precision CNC Machine Technology Program, and the welding program. So they're all really good programs and many of them are in full capacity. Welding, for example, is always full, but it is something to come, get information, and get your name on the waiting list, especially welding or Precision CNC, which are currently in high demand and the training is well worthwhile. In addition, I wanted to, just like school is around the corner, the first day of Polaris is August 27th. Juniors will start at 7:50, seniors will start at 11:20. We had our Board meeting for Polaris on Tuesday, we got a tour of the construction. It is, it is coming along really well. It's amazing how much they've done since the last Board meeting. They're working fast and furious and everyone's just a little bit nervous, just like with when our middle school and high school renovation were ongoing. This project's in phases, but this is phase one. And, you know, today, all the teachers came in and the administrators came in and they moved all of their materials back to their classrooms, et cetera. But we will be ready for the first day of school and it's going to be a great year. And then two shout-outs, one is for, where did it go? One is for our own middle school teacher, Megan Gasparo. And I just wanted to compliment her and give a shout-out to her. Earlier in the year, she participated in a symposium at Tri-C on women in STEM and women in manufacturing, and she has a long career in that. Just last year, she started the Gems Program, girls, engineering and math students, I think. But it's specifically towards young ladies and careers in engineering or technology or math. So we wanted to congratulate her and thank her for representing us very well. And I also wanted to congratulate Chef O. Chef O was recently, let me make sure I have it properly. He was recently announced as the State Board of Education District Five Teacher of the Year. So this is just another example of the work Chef O does at Polaris. I want, personally want to start a, start an investigation on why he wasn't the State Teacher of the Year. But there were many valuable and many deserving winners for the state, the entire state honor. But we're excited that Chef O was honored as the District Five Teacher of the Year. And when Carl and I are at OSBA in November, they'll be, those ceremonies will be wrapped up there. So congratulations to Chef O, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, can I move into legislation?
Legislation, my report is hopefully quick. A couple of House bills were signed into law by Governor Kasich. The ones I wanted to highlight are House Bill 318, which is going to address the qualifications of our school resource officers. So not only is it timely, but it is important. In addition to coming up with qualifications and certifications, it did appropriate $2 million for training in PBIS and also $12 million for competitive grants. And that's the one I think we should all be aware of and will take, will make sure to stay abreast of the information so that when appropriate, we can apply for those grants and hopefully receive some funding from Columbus. And in addition to that, Governor Kasich signed Senate Bill 216, which is known as the Public School Deregulation Act. It has quite a bit of changes to our school law. I'm certain many of us will be happy that it's going to overhaul, once again, our teacher evaluation system. And I'm sure we'll have a lot of fun in policy committee dealing with it. But it will improve things and take away a lot of the bureaucratic rigmarole, which is a good thing. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. That brings us to Board Liaison Reports, Jane, City Council?
Well, this will be a really quick report because City Council is in recess for the month of August. So we've had no meetings, but we'll start up again in September. So that concludes City Council report.
Excellent, Strongsville, you want to move on to...
And PTA hasn't started either, their meetings start in September. But I encourage everyone to join their local PTAs, whether or not you have a student at the school. It's always good to support the staff and students of their buildings, so.
It's also a really good pipeline for information.
Yes, it is.
If you want to know what's going on, join the PTA, you'll, you'll get the information firsthand and clear. Student achievement, we haven't started yet, do you have any, nope? Strongsville Education Foundation?
They did meet last week reviewing their initiatives for the upcoming school year. They've got some new ideas on board and so they kicked off the plan for the school year. Once again, they'll be supporting field trips for our students throughout the various grade levels and looking for new ways to promote, they had the best year they ever had in recent history with educator grants. You know, they partnered with the PTA to give a grant to our PE teachers to implement equipment to go with the Sparks curriculum. They provided funding for musical instruments at the, at the middle school and a variety of other sources. So they did, they had a great year and are looking forward to a successful 18-19.
Excellent. Board, that brings us to Board Committee Reports, there was not a Finance Committee meeting. I believe there was a Policy Committee meeting, unless you guys had a secret one in your basement, Richard?
There would be no secret ones, they're public meeting, they're public committee meetings.
Excellent.
If they ever occur in my basement, I'll still put out a public notice and welcome everyone to the meeting.
Excellent. Facilities Committee, I don't think we had one? Nope. That brings us to the Consent Calendar, item 15, all items with an asterisk are approved in one vote. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any, we had no corrections to the consent calendar, George, could you take role?
Colonel Owens?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Nasa?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Excellent. That brings us to Board of Education, other, the only thing I have is wishing everybody a great start to the new year and we're excited to get this going. One thing to talk, we mentioned the Brea Mid Park game, that's the 24th. That's going to be a great game, Brea Mid Park's got an excellent quarterback who just guns the ball and so it's, it'll be a shootout and a lot of fun to watch. So if anybody's looking for a good football game, come on down, check out the tailgate and then come on down.
Yeah, I just encourage everyone to be mindful of all those school buses and children that are walking to and from school. So please obey, when the little red lights are flashing, stop and look around, so we don't need any incidences.
Absolutely. Meeting notifications, we have a school board meeting coming up on August 6th?
September.
September 6th, sorry, and September 20th. We do have need for executive session on negotiations.
To review negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or their terms and conditions of their employment.
Have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Jane. Take, any discussion, take role?
Colonel Owens?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Nasa?
Yes.
Motion passed under an executive session at 7:45?
Yep, perfect. And I don't believe we have any public business afterwards. Thank you, everybody, have a great year, let's get it going.